We will call it to order, the meeting of the West Valley City Council tonight. Let the roll call show that all members of the council are present. And this week, Councilmember Tom Huhn is in charge of our opening ceremony. Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that very much. I want to invite all of you to stand up with me to do the last of the legend.
Our political allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. By way of special recognitions, I see we have some scout groups with us today. If we could have a senior patrol leader or equivalent from this group come up and introduce his troop? And let us know your troop member and your name and where you live roughly, maybe just the school you're closest to, and what you're working on tonight.
My name is Christian Farnworth and we are Troop 758 and 947. And we're here for the citizenship in the community merit badge. And I'm from Hunter Junior High and they're from Valley Press Elementary.
Great, thank you, welcome gentlemen. Let's see, we have a few other boys over here. Are you guys all part of the same group?
No, they're boy scouts though.
Okay, then we'll need one of them to come up and tell us their name and what they're working on today. Who's the oldest of you two? All right, come on down. Just tell us your name and your troop, where you guys go to school, and what you're working on today.
My name is Jacob. We're from West Valley City and we're Troop 97. And we're here for working on chickens.
Okay, great. Well, we're glad you're here today and thank you for coming. Let's see, are you a scout? No? All right. You're a scout? Okay. Also, by way of special recognitions, it's election time and a number of us up here on the dais are seeking reelection or seeking other offices, but we also want to recognize the other candidates with us today. I see Lars Nordfeldt and Phil Conder, both candidates for the at-large council seat out there. Welcome, gentlemen. And let's see, we had some in our earlier meeting, but I guess they didn't stay for this one. All right, let's go on to item five tonight, which is the approval of the minutes. We have the July 9th minutes in your packet, council. What's your pleasure here?
Move to approve the minutes of July 9th and 2nd.
Okay. We have a motion of second. Any discussion there? Okay, all in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved. We have a special proclamation, and Councilor Steve Vincent has volunteered to read this on our behalf tonight.
A proclamation declaring August as Neighborhood Watch Month and August 6th as National Night Out 2013 in West Valley City. Whereas, West Valley City strives to reinforce the importance of crime prevention awareness in the city. And whereas, crime prevention events have been planned throughout the month of August, and whereas, the National Association of Town Watch, Target, and Neighborhood.com are sponsoring a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violent prevention program on August 6th, 2013, titled National Night Out. And whereas, the 30th Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for West Valley City to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police community crime prevention efforts. And whereas, police community partnerships, neighborhood safety awareness, and cooperation are important themes of National Night Out program. And whereas, the mayor and city council of West Valley City does hereby determine that it is essential that all citizens of West Valley City be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact that their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in West Valley City. Now therefore, the mayor and city council of West Valley City to hereby proclaim August as Neighborhood Nights Month and August 6th, 2013, as National Night Out in West Valley City, and encourage residents to participate in activities taking place throughout the city in the month of August.
Hey, thank you, councilman. Next Tuesday, we don't have meetings because it's the fifth Tuesday, and so we take a breather. And then the next Tuesday is that National Night Out Against Crime, which Councilmember Vincent read. So instead of being here at the meeting, we'll be out among the different neighborhood groups, getting to know them and hearing them, and celebrating National Night Out, which our city does so well each year. So thank you. We come to item seven today, which is our comment period. The first part is the public comment period, and by our rules is not to last longer than a half hour, and no one person is supposed to last longer than five minutes. We have four people, five people who have signed up to speak in this comment period. And just a reminder that this is an opportunity for you to address us, not us for, not an opportunity for us to discuss or debate. If you have specific questions, we'll try to direct you the right way. And obviously, we're not only here to hear you, but so is the public and the executive staff and why not. First who's signed up tonight is Dallas Roberts. Dallas, are you here with us? Please come forward and we will record, we'll put into the minutes your address and phone number from the record here. Thank you, Dallas.
Hi. I was under the impression that you were meeting tonight to possibly talk about initiating an ordinance that would allow chickens in West Valley, is that correct?
Just a clarification, because I know a few are here on that topic. It was on our agenda for our work session, which we just, which goes from 4:30 to 6:30, and the discussion there was should we pursue a formal ordinance? It came out of that meeting that the majority of the council has asked the city manager and his staff to prepare a formal ordinance. So we're not voting on anything today. We have begun that process, so any input you have is certainly appropriate today, and we welcome that.
Okay, I was just here to-
Go ahead.
-to show my support for that. You know, I've had chickens on and off for a few years. They're streaming clean birds, they're great for, you know, kind of the, someone who wants to be self-sufficient, have the eggs and the meat. I know the ordinances in other cities seem to work really well. I know they ban roosters, which is fine. Roosters are noisy and can be very annoying, but you know, we've just, we've just had a great time. My kids have loved seeing that, the whole process of raising the birds and having them in our little backyard area. They keep the weeds down and you hardly ever see a grasshopper anymore. And they're much quieter than any of the dogs that my neighbors have. And I think the ordinances in other cities that I've read seem to, would alleviate any problems that people might raise. So that was, that's all my comment for tonight.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks.
Scott Berg?
What, I'm sorry, can I just say one more thing?
Sure.
Is there any way, so West Valley has given me time, I do have chickens and they've, they've given me some time to get rid of them. If you're considering an ordinance, is there any way to put a pause on that? Officer Hayward, I think, has given me a courtesy notice to get rid of them.
That's a great question, Mr. City Manager. How do you want to go with those cases?
We certainly can do that. We've done that in, not this particular ordinance or question, under consideration, but others like that in the past. I can have a discussion with the, in fact, I would be anyway, having a discussion with the department head, saying that we're going to be, that the council's requested us to bring a proposed ordinance back to them. And I'll talk with him at that time about what we might do in the meantime from that sort of consideration, but that's probably something we can do. I'll work through him, and they'll notify you through them.
It's a reasonable request, and there's probably others in that situation.
Probably.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Let's see, Scott Berg?
My name is Scott Berg, and since 1992, I've actually lived in what was Solomon Farms at the time. And since 1997, when Country Meadows Park was put in, I was actually bordering right on the park. The history of the park is that the neighbors have been very, very active in keeping watch on it. When graffiti's come up, we call very promptly. We've talked, we've done what we can to make sure the park is a safe place and a clean place. We have participated in everything we have been able to, to make the park what we think is a very valuable asset to the neighborhood. Sir, we were not, I have, there's a, there's Utopia Hub that's being built in the park right now, and I'm not against Utopia, I'm, in fact, I'm very much in favor of Utopia. I think that it's a great thing. But nobody in the neighborhood that I talked to, or my wife talked to, or that we have heard of, nobody was consulted on the hub, on the location, on the size, on the acceptability, on any of it. The hub is being put in a place where kids oftentimes play soccer all the time. It's being put in a place where they have a 20, a 4th of July breakfast every year. And if that's, if that's what the neighbors would have wanted, then that would be fine. The tradition has always been that, I was told several years ago that several neighbors wanted to tear the basketball court out because of, because of unruly kids that would come and visit. And I was against that, because I think that that sort of recreation is positive. But I was also told that there would be no significant changes to the park without the consent of the people that live on the park, bordering on the park and the neighbors around. This is what I would consider to be a significant change. And none of us that I know of, not one person that I talked to was consulted about this in any way. In fact, they started building either earlier this week or last week. Nobody even knew what it was until we went and asked. So if I had my way, I would actually stop construction, get consultation from the neighborhood. I don't think the way this has been handled has been very, very good at all. And I'm not very happy, I know a lot of my neighbors are not happy. The neighbors, the hub is going behind their house, isn't happy, okay? But the real problem here is, is that the neighbors were, it seems to me, completely, completely ignored in the way this was built.
Okay, thank you. Perhaps in the city manager or council comments momentarily, we'll have someone respond to that. Thank you. Renee Berg?
Obviously, you know why I'm here. I'm with my husband, and we live next to the park. I have dealt with Jason Erickson for 12 years on what happens in the park, and I feel like he's disappointed me. He did not clue me in, or any of us, as to what he was doing. I talked to him a month ago and asked him for garbage cans for our 4th of July breakfast, and he was very accommodating, gave me the garbage cans so that we could do our thing. And he chose not to say anything about the hub. So he had ways to get a hold of me, he knew about the hub, he told me he knew about the hub, that they'd been working on it, and he just ignored the issue and didn't say anything. That I would like to be addressed. Maybe you can talk to the city park people tomorrow, because they need to be able to work with the residents. And I don't know what happened to Jason, I don't know what he was doing, but he needs to know that it would be best if he worked with the neighbors. The second thing is, Neighborhood Against Crime, we do that every year, we've done that for 12 years. We're now wondering if the park is going to be a mess because of the construction. If it is, we'd like to know, because we will have to do our Night Out Against Crime differently. Where they're building it, it's right in the way. As my husband said, it's an inconvenience. It's not somewhere where we would have agreed to have it put. Another thing is, is I was told these hubs were discussed at city council. I looked up all the city council notes I could find, clear back to 2011. I could never find a date when the hub, for this hub, was discussed. It's at 4020 South, 4150 West. I found four other hubs, but I never could figure out where this hub was discussed. So it almost looks like it was just pushed under the carpet and just put there. And so I would like a specific date when it was discussed, if someone could give that to me. Any other questions? Because that's all I want to say.
There's a chance for you to talk to that, so.
No, it's just, it's extremely disappointing what they've done to the park. It's one of the smallest city parks, and they've taken a huge chunk of it where the kids play to put in their hub, their cement building. And they, they didn't want to put it on the corner, they didn't want to put it in Western Gardens parking lot, they didn't want to do anything else. They just wanted to put it right there in the park where the kids play. So are the kids supposed to play soccer in the street now? Is that what we should have them do? That really sounds acceptable. How many of you have children? You want them playing soccer in the street? Because it's threatened the other grass area now. So I think, like my husband said, it needs to be addressed and thought about. Maybe you guys should stop the construction until we can come to a decent consensus. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Shealy?
Shealy.
Shealy, thank you.
Well, I've never done this before, so I don't quite know what to say, but I'm here to address you about chickens as well. I've written to you, many of you, and talked to you about chickens, and I would like to see that ordinance changed. Unlike, I don't have chickens, but we know there are people out here in our community that have them. You know, and lots of other cities in our area and county, many of those areas have chickens. Why not West Valley? You know, part of what I've addressed in what I've spoken to some of you, is that I would have liked to have seen West Valley, you know, be a leader in this issue. You know, we need, we need some good news. You know, being, having chickens, that would be a great thing to, it's about sustainability, it's about property rights. You know, whether or not it's, whether or not this whole issue is waning like it was previously addressed, I don't know. My interest in it hasn't waned. I'd like to see it, it's about food safety. There are a lot of great ordinances out there too, Salt Lake City, Salt Lake County. I guess that's all I have to say. Please change the ordinance, and I appreciate that you bringing it up again. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Miranda Shealy?
Thank you for listening. My name is Miranda Shealy, and I've been talking to city personnel and officials since before the last ordinance about getting chickens. I have a lot of health problems, and that would be one of the solutions for me is to have a good source of chicken eggs that are healthier. But there's a lot of other reasons to have chickens. I know a lot of people who have backyard chickens in this valley, and I think those are the kind of people we want in West Valley City. The kind of people I know who have backyard chickens are educated professionals. The kind of people I know who have backyard chickens are concerned about health issues. The people I know who have backyard chickens are environmentally aware and concerned about sustainability, working towards sustainability. You know, these are the kind of people who are interested in chickens and who are willing to take the time and expense, because to build a good chicken coop, you're looking at, you know, a good $300 there. It's not just something you just throw up in your backyard if you're really interested. These are people who educate themselves and learn how to take care of their chickens. That takes a time commitment too. These are not the kind of people who are, these are the kind of people we want in West Valley City. West Valley City has some image problems. We have a reputation for not being very safe. We also have a reputation of being a little backwards. And when I talk to people about chickens, I say, oh well, you know, I will live in West Valley, we can't have them right now. They, oh well, of course, you know, there's no surprise there. It's just a given that West Valley has not caught up with that. So I would really like to be able to be proud of the city I have chosen to live in. I really love West Valley, we plan to be here forever, and eventually, we really would like chickens. I'd also like, as you consider this ordinance, a lot of the numbers you saw today and were asking questions about, those were thrown in there to be as conservative as possible, to be as appealing as possible to those who might not want chickens. So that's where some of those numbers came from. Also, I'd like you to really consider that having six, eight, maybe even 10 chickens in your backyard is a lot different than chicken farming. If the only thing you knew about dogs was what you would see in puppy mills, you would wonder why people would possibly want dogs as pets. If the only thing you know about chickens is chicken farming, you're maybe thinking that's not what you want to bring into the city. I assure you, it's a completely different thing. So with that consideration, I hope that as you work out this ordinance, you will consider my comments and the kind of people who want to bring chickens and the kind of people we want in our city. Thank you for your time.
Great, thanks, thank you, Miranda. That's all who signed up to speak in our comment period today, but I understand there may be a number of you who may be here in supportive of this, the idea of chickens in residential zones. Again, there are already a lot in agricultural zones. So just so we can get a better understanding as your elected officials, if there's, people have come today to speak or to show their support in favor of backyard chickens, if you could please stand up, just so we can kind of get a feel for those who are out here in favor of this issue? Okay, thank you. And so even those of you who didn't have a chance to speak today, your views are known and appreciated. Mr. Shealy?
I have one thing I wanted to add up there.
You took 60 of your seconds, and so I think I'll-
Thank you for your accommodation. If I may, for those of you who are still going to be here come next year, my wife and I would like to personally invite you to the Wasatch Community Gardens, they called it the Tour de Coupe in the past, and this year, they called it the Urban Farming Tour. I would invite, and all of you, to come with us and see chickens in homes around Salt Lake and all the other areas. I'll follow up with this in the future, but I'm going to throw that out there, so that you can see some of these, these other homes in our, in our valley. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
This concludes our public comment period, and we now go to 7B, which is our city manager comments. Mr. Pyle, anything you'd like to say today on any of the topics brought up by the public or anything else on your mind?
Thank you, sir. I'm not going to make any commentary on the chicken or the urban fowl question. You have, I think you illustrated already where the direction of the council is going in terms of what we're bringing back and from a staff standpoint for considerations, so I'll just leave that at that. I did speak with Mrs. Berg earlier today. She has, she had made contact with a couple of other people in the city already expressing her concerns about the Utopia Hut there in the park, and I did speak with her as well, so I'm aware of everything that she expressed to you. I also did tell her that I'd go out there and take a look at some of the other concerns that she was noting. I didn't know what the progress of the hut construction was at that point, I actually thought it was already done and finished and in. Hearing that it is still in construction or a construction phase, I'll take a look at that too while I'm out there, see if there are any, and certainly would be willing to look if there are other viable locations that would work that, I mean, I don't know that, a couple of suggestions that Mrs. Berg made there, for example, I don't know if they would work or would not work, but we're certainly willing to take a look at them. I think it is worth noting that we put in something like, I don't even remember how many of these things, over a dozen, maybe less than 20. And we went through a pretty exhaustive citing process internally. They're right, this is not an item under the city ordinance where the surrounding neighborhood would be getting, for example, notification of a conditional use or zone change or that sort of thing, it's just not that kind of a project. So they're correct, that notification wouldn't have gone out to the neighbors, but from a staff standpoint, from an internal look, and as was also mentioned, these locations as they came to the council, they saw them, and it might even be true, I'm not sure in this particular case, but it might, might be true that all of them didn't come to the council. It could have been determined by whether a construction easement was needed or a permanent utility easement, and those might have been the things that were examined and approved by the council at that time, not necessarily the actual location of a hut. I can assure you, there's nothing underhanded about the process, nothing was pushed forward without consideration or done because we were afraid of the exposure or the look that the neighborhoods would be going through. And in fact, we haven't heard, or at least I haven't heard, any complaints from the neighbors in the other locations. So we may have made a hasty look here, or too quick of a look, or something on this particular hut, I don't know, but I'll go out and take a look at that, and we'll look at that particularly.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
No, sir, thanks.
Okay, item 7C, city council comments. Councilmembers, any comments here? Mr. Christensen?
I'd just like to report that today I set in on a giant leap forward for West Valley City. We signed the mediation agreement between West Valley City, the Police Department, Projecto Latino, and the Utah Coalition of La Raza, which will help guide us in the future in many of our community relations aspects of our police department. And it will help bring our police department back into the confidence and the favor that they have seen in the past with these groups. And I think it'll work greatly to enhance what our police department will be doing in the future. I was happy to sit in on that, and I think it is a great step forward. It's the first time anything like this has been done in Utah, and so we're, we are leading in some areas, even if we're backward in a few others.
Great, thank you, councilman.
Mayor? Yes? I'll just take the time to thank those that have chose to spend their Tuesday evening with us and help be creators here in the West Valley City of how they want to be governed and what they want to see go on in their city. You know, I think the reason I wanted to point this out today at this time is that, you know, I think for years, we've kind of struggled to what's the most productive format of the public comment period. And we've kind of gone back and forth, and should we do this, should we allow this, should you have to sign up, should you have to do this? And, you know, I've really found that tonight's has been very, if not, one of the most constructive comment periods that, you know, I think we've had, even though there's only been, you know, a couple items discussed, but it really does help us as policymakers when an informed public comes down and takes the time and talks about broad policy issues in the city, and not necessarily what's going on with a certain case in their neighborhood, or that they were wrong by the city on one certain thing or another, but it talks to the, to the broad policy and direction and strategy of the city. And, you know, that is productive, and I just want to thank those that showed up tonight and look forward to having some further productive discussions on the broad overall direction of the city and the, as it relates to these and other topics in the coming weeks and months. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councilman. Any other council comments this evening? I will just add in relation to the Utopia Box Hut at Country Meadows Park, Mr. Pyle, if you could let us know through email, voicemail, the next meeting, however you choose to, what becomes of that, because that obviously is a concern of some of our residents, and we'd be interested to hear the resolution of that. We go on to item eight tonight, which is our resolutions, speaking of resolutions. And we have Resolution 13-1006 for our consideration. Mr. Pyle, if you could please introduce this one.
Thank you, sir. This is a resolution that is adopted and considered before each election, and this is to allow for appointment of poll workers and set their compensation for the 2013-14 election, for the budget that covers that election.
Okay, thank you. Council, what's your pleasure on this one?
Mayor, seeing as how, I guess I'm the, the only member of the city council that won't be on a ballot this year that can make a motion, that I guess it's my duty to, to offer, to recommend and move that we approve Resolution 13-1006, designating and appointing the poll workers for our August 13th and November 5th municipal election.
Is there a second, may I, you candidate councilmembers?
Second.
All right. A motion, a second, any discussion for this? I would just like to, they get a little bit of compensation, but boy, not a lot for a very long day, it's been a very important day, and I do always appreciate those poll workers, so I hope lots of people go out to vote, so they're not sitting there bored all day. And more importantly, or just as importantly, when you do, be sure to thank them, because they do give some great community service on that very important day. So we have a motion, and we have a second. All in favor of approval of Resolution 13-1006, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. It passes unanimously, and the elections will proceed on schedule. All right, number nine tonight is our consent agenda. But even though it's a consent agenda, there's some important appointments here, and so I asked the city manager to, for the sake of the public, to mention what we're doing here with those resolutions.
Sure, thank you, mayor. So these four appointments are for either reappointments or new appointments to the Professional Standards Review Board. And those folks are Mr. Cloyde Bell and Ms. Joan McCready-Burrell, she, they are the two reappointments. Ms. Vfifai and Ms. Abby Dizon-Mon are the new appointments to the board.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda tonight?
Mayor, move approval of the four items of the consent agenda.
Set him.
Okay, thank you both. Any discussion of these items? Any's like?
Just for the public information, city managers, are the new appointments replacements or additions to the board?
They're replacements.
Okay, and also just a note, as in recent months, as we've seen our police department in the news on various items, one of the actions we took as elected officials was to ask our staff to come back with some ways to improve our Professional Standards Review Board, which has been a wonderful board through the years of, again, good men and women willing to serve. But it's kind of evolved through the years, we thought it'd be important to take a good fresh look at that board, to make sure we're following best practices and- And the staff looked at a number of practices going on in other departments around the country and around the region and came back with some good recommendations, and we've adopted those. And one of those recommendations involves getting some new people on there. And so I think it's helpful to see not only some institutional knowledge, but also some fresh faces there, so it's a good, good thing there. All right, any other comments? Okay, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Any need for executive session tonight from anybody? Okay, then we come to item 11, which is to adjourn.